At the end, the time caper will ring a bell that sounds like what you heard just a minute ago.
We haven't had to use it yet.
Well, we'll see. For the next hour, we'll be listening to District Five candidates for County Council, Dan Palaika and Jen Ruggles.
First of all, I'd like to thank the district for Democratic Party, district for inviting all of us here, giving the public an opportunity to hear us out one-on-one. So, a little bit about myself. I was born on Maui Island in Waileku. I lived in Kuau. It's a small fishing village near Hokipah, if you're familiar with that. I moved here quite early, when I was seven years old. My dad, my mom were here, went to school here, graduated from Hilo High, also UH Hilo, was a corrections officer for thirteen years, then a union business agent, then focused more on business, opened my bed and breakfast, had done rubbish hauling before that, and also equipment and want to say hauling and landscaping. I met my beautiful wife in Germany when I was opening restaurants there, so I think I have a good balance of private sector and public sector knowledge. I'm very knowledgeable of the state and county systems. I think we've accomplished a lot in the short time that I have been a county council member. I'd love to continue on all the projects we started, especially the mass transit, and work more on our connectivity. Like, it was interesting to hear in the forum before us, the different perspectives of the mayor, so this gives me kind of a good sense if I'm so honored with your vote, which I do ask for, and I love my job. Thank you very much.
Mahalo. Ms. Ruggles?
Aloha, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is Jen Ruggles, and I was born and raised on the Big Island. I was raised in Puna. My mother grew up in Ka'au. She was a teacher for the Department of Education. It was a tough job. My father moved here in the seventies as a mason, and my grandfather built one of the first restaurants in Ka'au, Shaka Restaurant. And my grandfather was a conservative Republican. My father is a bleeding-heart liberal. So, I grew up identifying as a conservative liberal. But what it really taught me was to think critically, and I grew up with this sense, strong sense of justice. And my commitment to making a positive impact in Hawaii sense has influenced almost every major decision in my life. Upon graduating Kaila High, I joined a club on campus, and I facilitated over fifty events, all free and open to the public. We tackled issues like food and energy sovereignty, and economic, social, environmental justice. I've passed bills at the state and county levels, preserving beach access and getting big money out of government. Because politicians should not be torn between representing their big-money backers and representing the public. And that's just the bottom line, and that's why I'm running this campaign. That's how I'm running this campaign. My campaign contributions are all from the island, eighty percent from Puna. I've been going door-to-door. I've spoken to over a thousand people, and I know our issues. I've given my cellphone number out to two thousand people. I'm available, and I'm passionate about making a positive impact here. We are so underserved and underrepresented, and it's time that we start taking our district's issues seriously and really start to address them. And that's why I'm running. Thank you so much for being here. I'm from Puna, and I'm for Puna, and we have a lot of work to do. Mahalo.
Aloha. Thank you for being here.
Aloha.
Starting with Mr. Palaika, and then Ms. Ruggles, what is your understanding of the responsibilities of being a member of the legislative branch of Hawaii County Government?
My understanding, as being a member of the legislative branch of Hawaii County, is that we formulate or, first, I would say, get insight from our public and the constituents we serve, take into consideration all of the interests that might be on all sides of the issue, try to include everyone in that process, and after deliberating with each other, come up with a amended or bill that we all can more or less agree on and pass that'll become an ordinance for our county, or a resolution that we can forward to other branches of our government, say, or legislative bodies, or also executive branches. But, to me, that's our job as legislators, is to listen and come up with legislation that we all can be happy with, or at least satisfied with. Sometimes it hurts a little bit on all sides, and you know, I've heard before that a good compromise does hurt a little bit of all parties. So, you know, we have to be willing to compromise sometimes on issues, but move, you know, at least move forward in that direction, and that's what our legislative branch does, determine policy. Thank you.
I believe the responsibility of a county government public official is to represent their people in regards to all issues, but especially those that we actually have jurisdiction over, which include waste, emergency services, and other basic things, the things county roads, and then using discretionary funds to support different specialized groups that are doing work in the community, that the community really needs. But ultimately, we are to be a voice of the people. We set laws, we set guidelines for departments to follow, and we responsibly manage our resources for the long-term prosperity of our district and our people. And when people turn out in numbers to our county council, asking us to do something, and the council doesn't vote in the way that the people are asking, we are facing a crisis of representation. I believe that the people who live in their district know what's best for their district. The people who live in their community know what's best for their community, not Oahu. And it is the role of the county government to preserve our decision-making power in the face of the state who's trying to take it away from us on so many levels. We have an issue of home rule here. They're telling us that we can't regulate our own geothermal. They're telling us we can't regulate anything that comes to health, safety, life, and property here, which is absurd. That's a right given to us by our state constitution, and our county council needs to be doing more to fight that, to preserve that right, so that we can represent the people and make decisions on the best interest of the people. It's the role of the government to uphold the will of the people, and it's that basic. We need to be managing our resources for the long-term goal and not for short-term gains to please our campaign contributors who have an interest in profiting off of certain decisions that we make. We need to forego those things and be purely a voice for the people.
Thank you.
Ms. Ruggles, you kind of touched on the next question. It's asking you to list your top three priorities specifically and a plan to address each one.
Okay. So, I have two minutes, and our top three priorities, and how we'll do it. I've been going door-to-door. I've been talking with a lot of people, and roads is the number-one complaint in our district. And as a representative, I will do my best to address our road situation. When you live in Puna, you know the impact that poor roads have on everyday life, on our vehicles, and how much time it takes to get in and out, and even emergency situations. Most of the roads in our district are owned by private community associations, so first, I will work on a low-cost, multifaceted capacity-building program to support our associations and help them implement basic models that work across the nation so that they can be real representatives of their residents. Secondly, I will provide support through funding. I will introduce a bill that would allow associations to get a portion of the fuel tax revenue in their area to help with roads, so that they can get a little extra money from what they're not getting from their residents, and funnel in money through grant writing. There's a lot of grants out there that are available, and I believe the county should hire a full-time grant writer. One grant would be enough to pay for their position, and then funnel in that money to the associations. And lastly, I have several ideas. I've been doing some research on how the counties can help the associations and residents alike through road-by-road programs. Either they do a survey on the road or the block, and if everyone consents to it, they can issue a bond, and then the county can come in with their equipment and help improve the road. So, roads is number one. I'm sorry, there's not enough time. Nine more seconds to go to the second and third, but that's good. Thank you.
Mr. Palaika?
What are our three top?
If you feel you have time to do three.
Okay. Well, I started working on my first priority when I realized I was going to be the chair of mass transit, so I decided I'm going to take it on. And we proposed a mass transit master plan, which we should be announcing the recipient of that contract very shortly. I'm proud of that. It's been only, what, fifteen months since I entered this office, and I thought it was a pretty good achievement. We, so, I'll continue to work on it. That's one of my prayers, because I believe when you start something, you should finish it. The next was road connectivity. And why I gravitated to this was because of our involvement with the Puna Community Development Plan, which is the model for the island, I'm glad to say, with the good collaboration between the action committees, the subcommittees. We are on our way to getting the connectivity done. We've appropriated eleven million dollars, CIP. Hey, my grandparents were, both were mayors of Pasadena, and they were Republicans, two of them, both of them, you know? So, that's the kind of genes I come from. But I've been a Democrat since 2004. Anyway, the eleven million to do out our connectivity areas, there's priority Kupua, Pisik, and Salt Lako, and I'm also proud of that. Another issue I want to work on is homelessness. I sat down with Dr. Cobb. In fact, I think I'm meeting him on Monday again. So, we do have a kind of a housing first. I've sat at the CAP meetings. CAP is the Community Alliance that has been kind of trying to tackle a homeless issue, but, sorry, yeah.
Okay. This is going to go to both of you. We'll start with Mr. Palaika. Are you aware of any shortcomings of the Helion bus system? With transportation consistently listed at the top of Puna voters' worst issues, what ideas do you have for improving the Helion bus service in Puna?
I think I've outlined my major concern with the shortcomings of our bus system is because we lacked a master plan. I come from a background where when you do something that involves a lot of moving or integral parts, it's very good to have a plan. And that's why I thought it was very important to have such a plan. I think it sets a direction, and it certainly sets the foundation. It's supposed to. That's what we're paying them for, hope. But, you know, it's not to say that it's set in stone, but at least it gives you something to work off of that's solid, that's been vetted through the community. The community has been a big part of, can be a big part of it. That's what's supposed to be in the, that is in the contract, that they reach out to the public. Because I had major concerns regarding the disabled and our paratransit, specifically because we had faced a lawsuit at a, I'm not going to name the individual, but it seemed that that person had made it a, seemed like an occupation in suing counties or municipalities on shortcomings of paratransit. I thought it was unfair. However, it did bring to light that we needed to address that issue, and I'm glad that some of our constituents had brought it to my attention, come to me and voiced their very strong adamancy about addressing the issue regarding elderly transportation. My wife works with kidney dialysis patients. We need to address that. But also, the paratransit, I don't want to see us getting sued again, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Can, I'd like to do a clarification, and you'll have about thirty seconds to answer this.
Thank you.
You said you have a plan, and part of that is, do you see or understand the shortcomings of Helion at this point? And then you say you have a plan? Is that what I heard, to address that?
The master plan is going to be in the works. To me, we need a plan, and the study or the creation of a mass transit master plan will be that plan. I'm referring to the one and the same. Yes.
Okay. And so, there is a plan on the books? Is that what I'm hearing? Or coming, a plan on the work, in the works right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
It's going to be, it should be ordered any time.
Okay. All right.
Okay. And the shortcomings, I mean, there's a lot of shortcomings, I think, if I compare it to the, to the mass transit systems. I've been accustomed to traveling in different parts of the world than the United States. We could, we could use some definite improvement. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, there's several shortcomings in our mass transit system. First is that it doesn't, a lot of people have been saying it doesn't come on time, so we need to work on our coordination schedules and tighten them up a little bit. A lot of elderly children, they're out on the road, they're counting on the bus to be on time, and if it doesn't come on time, they're stuck out there, and that's, that's a safety issue. We also need it to, we need marked bus stops so that people know where the bus stops are, and if we can't afford it, we need coverage for people to wait under. We need the bus system to be a little safer for people. Sometimes, the, it's too much for the bus drivers to try to keep everybody in control if they're back there smoking, or they're yelling. There needs to, that needs to be addressed in some way. And finally, we need to expand the routes into the, into our districts. Transportation is a huge issue. We live in the poorest district in the state, and so a lot of people cannot afford transportation, so they count on the bus, and they have to walk miles and miles and hitchhike, and it's a safety issue, and it's not fair to our elderly or to our children. And there's a lot that we could be doing. We, we can find ways to fund a better bus system here. I know that we just spent twenty thousand dollars on painting all of the buses blue. I think that we could use twenty thousand dollars on other things as well. And, yeah, we can do this. Thank you.
Highway 130 is the most dangerous highway in the state, and Puna faces constant threat from national disasters, natural disasters. Working on connections between a couple of Maoka-Puna subdivisions is not the answer for thousands of people living in lower Puna, where the two most populated subdivisions represent a total of twelve thousand six hundred home lots. Mr. Palaika, here's a two-part question. Do you support the construction of a Puna-Makai access road, whether county, state, or federal jurisdiction?
Do I support a Puna-Makai access route with a county, state, or federal?
Whether whoever pays for it, whether it's county, federal, state?
Um, that's a hard question. Yes or no? Yeah?
Okay.
Because, but it's hard to say. Okay, yeah.
Okay. And Ms. Ruggles, do you support a Puna-Makai access, alternative access road?
Yes, of course, I support a Puna-Makai access route. How much time do I have for this?
Right, you'll, two and a half. Yes or no? Just yes or no?
Okay. Yes, definitely.
Okay. And would you support the use of eminent domain, Mr. Palaika?
I, I do support eminent domain as a last resort.
Okay. Ms. Ruggles?
If, if the parties who don't, who currently have jurisdiction over railroad do not support it, and we try to work with them, and we, and they refuse, I think eminent domain will be necessary.
Okay. Thank you. Back to you, Betsy. Betsy, Mr. Palaika, would you like to expand on your answer? And you'll get a chance to.
Thirty seconds.
As to why?
Thirty seconds?
No, you'll get two hours, two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yes. Not two hours.
Oh, two hours? Thanks, Roxanne! I like you!
Ms. Ruggles will too.
No, no, no.
Two minutes each.
Two minutes.
Okay. If you want to expand.
Okay. Let me, okay. Yeah. Puna-Makai access route, you know, I always thought it would be a beautiful idea to have a shoreline route, you know, similar to the ones we have in other places in our beautiful island archipelago, but since the SMA, Special Management Area requirements have come into play, I think it would be really, really expensive. Not to say that we couldn't find a corridor or a, come to some agreement of a route that would be beneficial, everyone could more or less agree on, or where it would hurt hopefully the least to each interest, but, yeah, I would certainly support a Makai access route. I know it's going to be difficult when we get close to the ocean because of that, like I said, and plus environmental and conservation concerns, but I certainly would, I'm always willing to listen and see what kind of real solution that everyone could get behind of. And I think that's the best way to go.
Moderator, point of clarification. The question was Puna-Makai access road. We're not specifying railroad.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
It depends on the route, you know? If we can agree on a route, where?
Just towards the ocean. Okay. Thank you.
So, right now, when we talk about a Puna-Makai access route, we're generally talking about railroad.
Right.
That's, that's the route. It's ready to go. It's already there, and we just need to improve it. The situation is we have tens of thousands of people in Puna that whose safety is at stake, all based, and there's, there's one entity here who is opposing it, and that is Shipman. They're opposing it because they're, they don't want their farm thefts to increase. And we need to be completely transparent and, I mean, and real about this situation. As voters, you need to be aware that I've accepted no campaign contributions from Shipman. You should also be aware, the last election season, my opponent, of the five percent of campaign contributions that come from the district, sixty-six percent of those are from Shipman, who oppose railroad opening.
Once again, I'd like to remind you, we're not specifically talking about railroad. There's talk about eleventh, further down towards the ocean, so it would split them in two. So, we just are asking about.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But, I mean, the railroad is the most feasible Makai access route there, and if there are better routes out there that everyone can get behind, I would definitely support that as well, if, if they're there. And, but it needs to happen. We are facing a crisis right now, and we, we can't be skirting the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy?
Okay. Thank you. Puna residents, most of whom live in neighborhoods with private, substandard roads established a half a century ago, pay real property taxes, sales taxes, auto registration, gasoline taxes, et cetera, et cetera, but get absolutely no help from any level of government for upgrading our roads or connecting the subdivisions. What legislation or strategy could you propose to get the county to respond to this need for help in road construction and maintenance in the Puna district? Mr. Palaika?
I believe I've already began doing that. I worked with the homeowners, the different homeowners' associations, and that was one of my major concerns coming in. I live in Hawaiian Acres where, when I moved in nineteen ninety-one with my wife after living five years in Germany, the roads were terrible. There was no electricity, but I knew that when I moved there. That's why I paid the price I did. But I told my wife, "Oh, hey, I bought a piece of property in Hawaii." When she came, she was, "Whoa, what is that?" It was all overgrown, but hey, I loved it. It was my piece of the island, you know? And I was proud to say that, yeah, we built our first home there. But, in roads, connectivity, we're going to continue working on connectivity. For the homeowners' associations, there's just different ways you can address this. There are associations that do have mandatory road fees. There are, like Hawaiian Acres where I live, there are none. So, I took it upon myself, since I have a bed and breakfast in Hawaiian Acres, to buy my own equipment to work on the road. And, hey, it's part of my community, so of course, I'm going to give back. And that's the way I found to give back. It's an expensive piece of equipment, but I knew when I moved in there, and that's what I was willing to do. And I continued to use my equipment for other purposes, like pulling down, pulling out trees when they cross or take down power lines on the road I live, you know? That's part of what we do, and we're part of a community. We work together on solutions. So, we are working on getting funding, but it's very difficult with the highways, the current highways. It got refunded at the federal level, but there's not really that much money there. But I'm going to continue on our connectivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ruggles?
I'll just reiterate what I said. We have a lot of options that the county could be doing, because right now, the county's current, you're-on-your-own policy with the associations, isn't working. And most of the roads in our district are privately owned by association, so like I said, there are a lot more options for associations and options for the county to be lobbying the state to be getting funds, to do capacity building. There was the Kuakahhe Mediation Center training, homeowners' conference that happened a few weekends ago, that was excellent. It's about capacity building, teaching associations, empowering them so that they can be accountable and fully functioning, efficient representatives and community centers for their residents that take care of their roads first and foremost. Because it's true, we do pay property taxes, so we need to take those property taxes that Puna is paying through the county government and put it back into what our residents want and need, which are the roads. When a lot of people think about paying taxes, they think about roads. That's why they pay taxes. So, the county needs to be stepping up and finding ways to use that tax money to make the roads better. There's the fuel tax revenue, like I mentioned. We could be getting eight percent of that to our associations in a rotating manner. There's also an idea to... There's also an idea to give the associations, to establish a proper process for giving the associations county, old county asphalt that they use in improving the roads, when they do their road construction, that they normally discard of. We could be giving that stuff that we're just throwing away to the associations for their roads. So there's a lot of options out there, and I have been developing a database of people I've been talking to who are passionate about this and who are ready to tackle this. And I've, I've got the groups ready to go if and when I'm elected. Thank you.
Um, I would like to follow up. Uh, is there, okay, I've asked this of the, of a lot of candidates, and no one really has good answers. My question is, is there any legislation that could be passed that could change the situation for us? Either Mr. Palaika or Ms. Ruggles?
I'll respond to that. Sure. Okay. The options that we could do in legislation, um, which, I don't want to kind of let my cat out of the bag, but you forced me to. But we can do design districts. And basically, the premise is, and it's been done, it can be done, is the district, you assign a boundary of the district. It's collected by the county. It's a fee collected by the county. Um, it's only for that district. So say a board, a homeowners association, the boundary of that association would be the boundary. You have the board as the, uh, oversight committee, but the county collects the fee. It's tax deductible, and it can only be used for improvements in that district. It's collected by the county, so they have, they save their administrative costs. But the board still retains control over what direction that district would, would go in terms of, uh, improving their, their infrastructure. And the design district, you can set the parameters and the scope of what kind of projects would be made. That's what I would do, and perhaps intend to. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of different legislation the county could be introducing to change our situation. There's the, the fuel tax revenue legislation. And where I would start is it has to be done, community by community, and it has to be consensual for each neighborhood. So whatever, we have to go as county representatives, present the options to each subdivision, and if they would like to go along with those specific pieces of legislation, then I will pass it for them, or at least try to pass it with my colleagues.
The next question, um, is dealing with crime. Uh, it's, uh, the, the serious problem in upper Puna subdivisions with their large lots and isolated, isolated homesteads, although I would suggest that many are regardless of size of lots or isolated homesteads. Many residents have experienced theft of appliances, heavy equipment, building supplies, et cetera. Despite the victims reporting information about the suspects, uh, it, it, it's with abundant information, individual police officers as well will say they know who are carrying out the thefts, and nothing happens. Uh, it's, I guess, from your perspective, what, why is this happening? What's the reality? What's going on? What's the solution?
Me personally? Okay. All right. You know, I have become aware of the rash. Uh, there are burglaries that are occurring. Maybe I shouldn't give up too much information, but, um, yes, we do have a problem currently with certain areas in the Puna District. I do, uh, voice my concerns to our administration, um, here in Puna. Captain, Captain Jawsma and Lieutenant Mahuna, we have great community officers. But, um, it's about knowing how to use the system too. So I sit down, not only with the police officers, but also the prosecuting attorney, and also the homeowners associations, or the, the individuals that have been brave enough to forward, uh, their concerns to me. In fact, I just met with one individual up, I shouldn't say the area, Punamalka, near where I live. Um, and I've received some other concerns, and, and I can tell you, I address them. Uh, there was one in, not too far from here, that we've gotten taken, taken care of. I'm corrections officer. I know these, a lot of the administration. When I talk, I know what I'm talking about. I know a lot of the perpetrators, and I know their history. I know their families. They are people too of our community. Unfortunately, a lot of them need help. A lot of them are suffering from, uh, and to answer the second part of your question, substance abuse has a lot to do with it. Um, hopefully, it's not no longer economic. I think we're moving out of that. But, uh, yeah, definitely, there's been a rise, a little bit especially, uh, especially with ICE. So to take care of that, I believe we just need to be diligent. I, when I spoke on the strategic part of, uh, what we need specifically now in Puna, the answer I got, uh, was basically, uh, burglary task force. So one supervisor and one, uh, regular officer. Thank you.
So there's, there's a website that lists the 13 most dangerous places in Hawaii. And unfortunately, 10 out of the 13 places are on Hawaii Island, and four of them are in Puna. Fern Forest, Eden Rock, Pohua, and Curtis Town. We have not only the, a higher rate of property crime than the national, than the state average, but the national average for property crime. And it's worth noting that this, this doesn't include, this is just property crime. We're, we're really low on murder rates and violent crime and all of that, which sort of has to do, I think, with the spirit of aloha here. People are desperate, but they're not willing to go to that level. Uh, our prosecutor Mitch Roth says that 99% of all property crimes are related to methamphetamines. And the issue is just growing. Growing up here, I've seen how meth can just be so pervasive within our communities. I've had friends, and, and at some point, my friends that have, have gone into that come to me, and they say, "Jen, help me." And I don't know where to send them. There's not a lot out there. They've tried Bisac. They've tried the mental health and wellness centers, and they don't have enough resources. We need to be looking at this more seriously. I've talked to a few people who have tried rehabs on the mainland, and as a councilperson, I can help facilitate that exchange of information to, from the mainland, what, what's working for them, to the local service providers here. Because we can do it. We can help. There's always a point in their lives when they're ready to be done with it, and when they're ready to commit, we need to be there for them to do it. And that's really at the core. That and the economy. And I, I don't have enough time to get into that.
This is going to be a two-part question, and you both will be answering. Homelessness is a growing problem in Puna. There are a number of former county-owned transition cottages that have been stored behind Pohua's Catholic Church for several years now. They're not being used, and apparently, they're just sitting there pretty basically rotting. Would you, as our council representative, work with the community to find a way to use those cottages to help alleviate our local family's houseless problem? That's number one. Number two, is there any other legislative solution beyond going after squatters that you would propose to help deal with the homeless issue? And Ms. Ruggles, will you start first, please?
Sure. We've had 123% increase in homelessness here in Hawaii since 2013. We're estimated to have 1,300 homeless people, houseless people, excuse me, here in Hawaii. And the widening gap, I mean, the widening housing affordability gap is one cause. And we need more support for veterans. Veterans play a large, they're a large proportion of the houselessness here. And also, mental health and, um, the people who have mental health problems. So it's, it's a multifaceted, it's a complex issue. And in the long term, between shelters, jail stays, ambulances, and hospital visits, caring for one houseless person typically costs the government tens of thousands of dollars every year versus giving them a house. It's, it's a lot cheaper in the long run. Um, according to the New York Times, it's, it's, it's 8,000, it's only $8,000 to give some, give a houseless person a home versus $20,000, considering all of the costs. So there's a lot of initiatives that have happened in other states that are really successful. The Housing First Initiative, which is providing permanent housing solutions to the chronically homeless, and, and this, this isn't including the temporary displacement. But regarding the, the homeless shelters over in Pohua, right now, the Catholic Church owns that, and they're willing to sell it to Hope Services, who is the number one service provider for the house situation here. And if Hope Services cannot afford it, I believe the county should, and those should be opened.
So you're saying that there is something ongoing right now that, um, is in the works, let's say, for those shelters, those little homes to be, so have something happened with them? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, there's, there are, yes, there are plans that are, that, I believe Main Street Pohua is spearheading this, and there's some permitting issues with the water systems that need to be taken care of, that the county could help with. And once that's taken care of, they can open it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Palaika?
Okay. Um, regarding those cottages, are you talking about the cottages or the land also?
Um, well, there's, there's shelters that were placed there on purpose to be used for houseless residents, for house people. They're not being used. They are rotting. And, um, what are your thoughts about that? And what do you know about any efforts to make a change?
Okay.
And then address also about, um, going after squatters as a way to deal with the houseless issue.
Okay. So regarding the cottages, you know, I, I, I took an active role in this too, in just trying to get or help our homeless situation, because at that time, it was becoming a greater and greater issue. You know, when, uh, we did our point in time count, it was over 1,400. Um, it's even more than that, I believe, you know, for the entire island. I'm pretty sure of that, um, having participated in the point in time. Those, back to those cottages specifically, um, my, my effort was to somehow get the, uh, unions, who are, um, I work pretty good with, uh, I have a long relationship with them, and they do help our communities. They helped our Mountain View School with $25,000 in grants and spruced up their school. So, yeah, I believe unions are good and not bad. Anyway, so a union representative went out to see if we could help, and specifically because that property, if we're considering the property, would need significant improvements to their water, uh, water system and delivery. The cottages themselves, when, when inspected by these individuals, a lot of them were, in, in, in local terms, "Ah, more better we throw them buggers away, because it's useless." But some maybe could be saved. Um, in term, uh, the efforts, it just, I'll leave that at that. So that's what I've been doing. And with the land, I'm kind of, I'll leave it up that the community is working on that, and I like to leave it to, um, I like to hear things first before I, um, think any further on that. But in terms of squatters, you know, we had, we have a problem with squatters. Um, in fact, some of the, um, law enforcement issues we just stated is done, is being perpetrated allegedly by squ- uh, individuals that probably are squatting. So, um, we have taken an active role in getting, uh, squatters off of the property, but it's also important to remember, these are people. And if they are families, it's even worse, because it's not the kids' fault, that what their parents are doing, if they're squatters. So services have to be able to capture these individuals, to me, because it's not Hawaiian style, man. We want land of aloha, you know? So you can be enforce, enforce the law, but we got to enforce the aloha too, and help these people. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll segue into water. Water is a human right, but most of Puna is dependent on rain catchment. What do you do to get the Department of Water Supply to expand its water transmissions and distribution systems in Puna?
To get the department to...
Expand water transmission and distribution systems in Puna?
The county has a annual budget of, I think, half a billion every year. I mean, yeah, every year, two years. We have, right now, Puna is not getting our fair share of our services, and it's really clear when it comes to water. In Fern Acres, my house burnt down when I was eight because the fire trucks couldn't access water. We had to use the neighbor's catchment, which was like half a mile away. By the time they ran that line, it was over. The house was gone. So I sympathize with our water situation, and it's definitely a serious one. It's one of public safety. And so the county needs to work with the Department of Public Works and Water Supply to make sure that Puna is, is getting their fair share of water lines, even if we just have a water line run into every subdivision for emergency services. And down the road, if we have the funds, we can give each resident, each property owner, the option to hook up to county water, because some people don't want to hook up to county water. But at least they'll have the option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Water. I'm glad this question was asked, because we just recently had a, um, rainstorm regarding water with the Department of Water Supply. I'd asked them in our pre, actually, we had two meetings with them. First was to kind of just push around the idea of, um, what, well, first of all, I kind of asked them, "Hey, whatever happened to those exploratory wells that were supposed to be, um, done and drilled for our Puna areas? They even had the sites." Of course, the money lapsed. So, I asked them, "So where would, or, we need to drill wells. I think we need to deliver water system. How would we do this best? And where would we probably, uh, put this system?" The answer is, "Don't everybody go run out and go buy in this area, yeah? But the, the logical solution is in aloha would be the easiest and the most cost-effective." Water supply is an expensive, expensive endeavor, period. Um, you know, when I first moved to the Big Island, one of my best frie, my, in fact, my best friend at that time, um, his dad was Bill McCracken, and he built, uh, he drilled Waikiki Well. So I'm kind of familiar with that drilling. It's amazing, the stuff you go through, and you're a long experience in life. But anyway, yeah. But, um, for water, we can get it to the communities. There are lines that go on the highway. Um, it's going to be a major expense. I think the design district, uh, models or, uh, similar to could accomplish this. You know, as, as homeowners, and we came into this area knowing that they were affordable places, and if we want improvements, we're going to have to suck up and be a part of those improvements. And it takes money. Thank you.
Okay, Betsy. Turning now to solid waste. Waste management, wait, uh, Waste Management's Wheel Abrader Technologies proposed to build an incinerator for 112...
proposed to build an incinerator for $125 million before the county council killed the idea of an incinerator. Would you vote in favor of Hawaii County building an incinerator if it was proposed again? Why or why not?
Ms. Ruggles?
In 2009, the county passed the Zero Waste Implementation Plan. It's in the county charter. The incinerator does not fit into that plan. The incinerator is not a sensible way of dealing with our waste. We need to focus on resource recovery. In the past two years, that whole incinerator idea, the council went ahead with the mayor's idea in disregard of the county charter, and it cost us tens of thousands of taxpayer money, which we will never get back, and two years of time that we will never get back. And this is unacceptable. The incinerator, it's, I am not in support of the incinerator. It would cause us to have the smallest incinerator ever built in the U.S. And this is unprecedented. It would encourage us to make rubbish, because for the contractor, it would have to be worth it for them to be getting a certain amount of rubbish. And if we didn't meet that amount of rubbish, we would get a fine. They would fine the county. And it has, while it has filters to prevent air pollution, if something happens with those filters, where the incinerator would have been placed, it would have been right smack in the middle of Hilo, right next to the second biggest population of native Hawaiians and our ocean in Hilo, the second biggest city on the Big Island, no, the biggest city on the Big Island. And this is unacceptable. And we have a zero-waste implementation plan. We have an opportunity to create a green-collar job industry that turns our waste into resources that we can use, that will create jobs and protect our environment, our greatest resource to pass down to our future generations. Thank you.
Would I support an incinerator? I don't know. It's a hard one, because not knowing what the plan is or what it would look like. You know, funny, the last trip that we went back to visit our family in France and Germany, we went to different solid waste management facilities. And in Munich, they had a wonderful facility. And I got an opportunity to tour the area, tour the system. They used digesting and created compost, but also burned the digester fuel that laid on the top of this when it's in the chamber, and they created energy. But they also created compost that they sold to a third party that created revenue. But they also burned, but they also sort theirs. They invest a lot of money into their solid waste stream. So in Hawaii, should we invest a lot into this? I believe we do. We owe it to our ina. It's funny, Hawaii country, we don't have a collection system, but every other island does. Well, at least Maui and Honolulu does have collection, and we don't. Too bad. An incinerator is gonna probably come to life anyway on the island. We have Pu'ho'ua probably gonna come online, and the county's not gonna be doing it, but probably private sector's gonna jump in there, because it's feasible for them. And the county might end up making contracts with them, who knows? The technology changes so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question is, Ms. Ruggles, if you could answer first, is what is the role of unions in government? And are you personally anti-union, and if so, why?
So unions have played a really large part in Hawaii history, with the plantation days. Just to remind you guys, the story of really what makes us Hawaii is unions. Back when there was the plantation days, we didn't have unions. We had the Chinese, we had Japanese, Filipino, and they were all working in these little segments. And the plantation owners took advantage of that. They used that conquer and divide to separate them and take advantage and exploit them. And as a result, everyone came together and they established unions to be a voice for working people. And as a result, we are the largest unionized state in the U.S. Unions have a large part to play in working families' quality of life. My mother was a part of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. So no, I'm not anti-union. I think that they are a voice of the working people, and they are a voice to be considered when we are making decisions on behalf of working-class people.
And Mr. Palaika?
Unions. Who needs unions, right? Of course, we need unions. You know, it's, the unions have been a part of the Democratic Party for a very long time. I, as a union representative, became more involved with politics. And that was one of the major reasons I joined up in 2004, because they're active. And they've contributed a lot to this party. I think they're part of the structure that makes up the fabric of this party. I was proud to be a Democrat, you know, for the most part. But unions, they fight for the benefits, compensation. I know when we all try to seek their endorsement, it's because we want to show that we work for the, or we support the working people, the backbone of our government, you know? A lot of the complaints are, a lot of the burden is placed on the working class. There's been that separation between the rich and the poor. And our working class is being the victim. And the unions are there to prevent that. I know when I served as a union representative, I tried to do the best I could in representing the membership that I served. I'm proud to say I'm endorsed by UPW, HGA, SHOPO, and Assistant Municipal Few. Thank you.
Okay. Now I'd like to ask Jen, I mean, Danny or Jen, no, I mean, Ms. Ruggles, where did you get the money to run your campaign? And who are your biggest donors?
My biggest, well, first of all, 80% of my donations are from Puna, 95% of them on island. Five percent, that other 5% is from somebody on Kauai and somebody from New York who was really inspired by the fact that I was running. It was his first contribution to anybody, and it was an honor, it was $10. Let's see, my top, okay. My top, okay, I got $600 from a man named Adrian Farrell. He lives in Kalapana. Another 600 from Victoria Flavelle, who also lives in Kalapana. The next three, I believe, were $300 donations. Oh, I loaned myself $1,000, and I received $1,000 from Melodia Scott. Those are my five largest contributions. My average contribution is $77.
Thank you.
I don't, yeah, you can look at my campaign spending, I'd be happy to answer any more.
And Mr. Palaika?
According to a statement I just heard, 66% of my contributions come from Mr. Shipman. I think that's incorrect. No. Most of my support, a lot of my support, comes from unions. Why? Because I've developed a long relationship with them. And they know I work for the working people, the people who work hard, pay taxes, and have a certain expectancy, as we all do, on our government, to provide the services that we need. I believe some of them, I don't know if they've reached the limit yet, but Hawaii Equipment Operating Engineers, IBW, I believe, carpenters, HGA, UPW, but I think they all reduce, are we talking just about this cycle, right? Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, because last cycle, I raised like 45,000. This cycle, I think we're only at like 12, because I didn't think it was necessary. My name was out there, and I don't like to burden people, you know? But they have supported me, they continue to support me. There are some private contributions. I don't know if I got anything from Shipman this year. I might have, maybe $200 or something, I'm not sure. I have to ask my treasurer. But, yeah. I do get contribution from business, I do get contributions from private citizens, from family members, I'm not sure. And I don't, I don't think I, well, of course, I have income for myself and what my family might give, but I don't think I loaned myself anything or paid myself anything, no. No, I believe I haven't, not this cycle. I know I did loan my campaign money last time. No, I gave my own campaign money last time. This time, I didn't think I would, I didn't have to, not yet. Thank you.
All right, we have come to the end of our question-and-answer session. We want to thank our candidates for being here. Appreciate both of you sharing your ideas and thoughts. We're going, there you go. We're going to give each candidate 60 seconds for a wrap-up statement, and we'll start with Mr. Palaika.
I don't know why anybody would vote for me in the first place, but, no. No, I really, I truly, truly enjoy what I do. I have great staff, I get to meet wonderful people, I've made great relationships, and I'm looking at a couple of them straight, you know? And it's about serving the people. You know, when I was a corrections officer, I enjoyed doing that. It was kind of hard, but, you know, just those one, that's that one person that comes back to you later and says, "Hey, Dan, thanks for, you know, at least saving some time for me and, you know, helping me find out." It's so rewarding, just like this one is. When we get stuff done, it is so rewarding. And, you know, I don't believe we're the poorest. I don't believe we're that bad, because we're not. We have aloha. We have a community here that is so rich in helping each other out, and it's so evident when we have national disasters, that, you know, to say that we're the worst in anything does not serve the public well. We have a lot of opportunity coming our way. I believe we're headed in the right direction. I do hope you hope for me. Again, get me in there, because I really want to continue and work on more stuff. You know, in terms of union, we all try to get endorsed by a union. But who do they endorse? I think that speaks loudly. Thank you.
Ms. Ruggles, you have one minute.
One minute?
One minute.
All right, I don't think that's fair, but okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There, the timekeeper speaks.
I'm running for office because our district is underserved and underrepresented. The statistics show we are the poorest district in the state. We have the most dangerous roads in the state, and we are the fastest-growing in the state. That's the statistics. That doesn't mean we don't have aloha. And I was born and raised here, and it's time that we start taking our problems seriously. I have a proven track record of working with people. And like I said, every decision in my life has been made with making a positive impact in Hawaii. I'm passionate about representing the people here and finally getting us what we need. I'm not a politician, I'm an organizer. I have a proven track record of working with diverse groups of people to make things happen, preserving beach access, getting big money out of government. And I have a vision, I have a vision for Hawaii, a vision for this district, that we can be 100% sustainable, we can be producing 100% of our own food. We can have a thriving, diverse agricultural and other diversified types of jobs, where everyone's employed, and an economy that produces safe and clean food like it did for countless generations. And I believe in thriving community associations, centers of each subdivision that have farmers' markets, public commercial kitchens, and community gardens. I envision a county that makes it not only easy for small business, but supports the thriving diversified local economy that makes the most of our local talent here. I'm running for office because I'm passionate about doing something meaningful, and I can't do anything else. I'm running for justice, and I'm running because I believe we need to uphold the will of the people and not represent anybody but the people, especially the people in our district. Thank you.
Let's give each of our candidates a big hand. We appreciate their time and their willingness to answer our questions. Thank you very much, both of you. That's the most sustained applause we've had all day, so, good for you guys.
Thank you.
That ends our forum today. We hope you've enjoyed it, and we want to thank District Four volunteers for putting this on. Took a lot of hours to put it all together. We appreciate all the candidates that came out. And remember, there is a primary election coming up. Be sure and vote.